Thank you, Darren. I will take a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President, I need that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Any discussion? Ready to vote? So, we are ready for school highlights, and I see Dr. Anderson at the podium.
This is our favorite time, or certainly my favorite time, part of the board meeting, where we take time to acknowledge our staff, our students, proclamations, and so we're going to start off with acknowledging our students and having our students first, and our first student this evening is our Senior of the Month. Will our Principal, Mr. Dustin Dick, come on up? Senior of the Month is something that we started last year, where we bring one senior up. This is so important, because only a handful or fewer seniors can come up when you have a different school every month. So, clearly, this is an exceptional student, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dick to talk about Nina Killian. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have the pleasure tonight to introduce you to Nina Killian, our Senior of the Month, and our co-valedictorian this year. It's the first time that I know him for quite a while that we've had co-valedictorians at Topeka West. She's been with us for four years. She has, she came from parochial schools all through her school career until she got to high school. Her GPA is 4.49. She's done very well. She's probably one of our harder working students academically, and if you look at her academic history, she's taken the ACT three times in order to get the score that she was happy with, each time increasing her score by one point, so that's pretty tough to do, especially when you get into the 33 range. It's challenging. She took five AP courses in her senior year. We don't have many seniors that are willing to take courses like that. Lots of them like to take a little bit of a break when they get to their senior year, but Nina, she took five AP courses. And in fact, when I look through her academic history, she's actually taken more than 50% of her courses as AP or honors courses. So, 27 out of 33 courses she has taken have been AP courses. She participated cross-country in the time she's been at Topeka West, and she plans to go to K-State next year, and I'll let her tell you a little bit about what her plans are from there.
As she prepares to answer a couple of questions, we also have a video that will be running on our television station, and the piece that we've also added, so we'll see that two-minute clip, and then we'll turn it over to Ms. Killian.
Just got Nina's nice personality. She's very academically oriented, very driven in her academics. That's why she's so successful academically, I think. She ran cross-country and track for me these past four years, and so she's really come out of her shell and developed into a well-rounded student.
What I love about Topeka West would probably be my teachers. They have really like pushed me and challenged myself over the years, and they've just been really supportive, and I think that's one of the reasons I have been successful. I'd be most proud of being co-valedictorian. I worked really, really hard for it, so it's nice to be awarded.
I'm proud of the way that Nina has just kind of embraced the high school experience. She's, like I said, very focused on her academics, but she also took time to run cross-country, run track, took time to volunteer. She also took time to go and be a part of the school atmosphere, and just kind of getting the whole high school experience, I think.
My favorite part of my senior year would probably just be making memories, like with my friends before we all leave for college. I'm going to K-State in the fall for mechanical engineering. I want to go into renewable energy.
I'd tell Nina just to continue to be who she is, continue to pursue her academics at high levels that she has when she goes on to college, and then pursue that career that she wants. And at the same time, I'd tell her to just step back and really enjoy the journey. Good luck, Nina, next level. I really look forward to seeing how you grow, beginning to grow, and how you become a great person in the future as well as you are now.
Well, members, do you have questions for Ms. Killian?
Any questions?
I would like to ask students if they have a particular class or teacher experience that really stood out for them. I'm sure you loved all your teachers, but if there's any, anything you'd like to tell us, and what you valued about moving to Topeka West after your parochial school experience.
Yeah, so, coming from a parochial school, I didn't really know what to expect, but I decided to go to public schools. I thought I'd have more opportunities, like academies, more AP classes and stuff like that. Plus, I knew Coach Palmer, and I wanted to run cross-country for him, so that was definitely a really good experience, and it's, I think, one of the best decisions I've made personally. I've met so many new people. Definitely one of my favorite classes would probably be AP physics. Everyone said it was going to be like the hardest class ever, but I really enjoy it. Mr. Rep is a really great teacher, and it's definitely helped me like learn how to problem solve and stuff like that, and I think it'll be very useful for college.
Well, I'm really sorry that Mr. Woods is not here. He works for West Star Energy, and I feel certain that he would pull out a contract with you right now, so keep us in mind in the future, and good luck to you. We're so proud of you, and students like you that really represent our district well. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, Nina, is anybody with you tonight?
My parents.
Would you like to introduce those?
Yeah, my dad, my Killian, and my mom, Mora Helen.
Any other questions for Nina? Congratulations.
Want to open the gift? And we ask that you stay, because at the end of all of the highlights, we will be taking a picture with the board. And Ms. Killian, the certificates, and the certificate is proudly presented to Nina Killian in recognition of the April Senior of the Month. All right, with that award and highlight, we will transition to our next highlight. Mr. and Mrs. Killian hang around for about five minutes, because we want to end up taking a picture with the entire family. Our next highlight, we have several. The Topeka High men's basketball team. Will Ms. Morrissey please come forward and introduce those individuals that are with her as we prepare to recognize the men's basketball team?
Surprise! Well, it is an honor to be here this evening, and I'm going to share two things. Because of them, we have another sharing, if you haven't heard. But I'd like to start by recognizing our men's basketball team. It wasn't always an easy year. They struggled here and there along the way, but they showed that if you continue to work hard, that anything can happen at the end. And I will tell you, except for about six minutes at the end of the first quarter and early second quarter, we could have been in the championship just as easily as we sit here and state champions. But I'm very proud of the fact that both coaches, Coach Danny's here, Coach Nichols is also here, if you guys would stand, and...
And if our coaches can come on up, because I'm sure you'll have some words that you may want to share.
And I'm going to try this. I'm terrible at names if you've been around me, but Darren Candy, Marvell Yates, Kai Thomas, Larry White, King Sutton, and Devonte Harden. I guess any of us is here. And I don't have the glasses on, so I really can't see, so it's a good thing they have like, I guess I do, but not the right ones. Anyway, third place this year, tremendous. They handled themselves also with class at the state tournament. And that's the other thing I wanted to share, is as a combined effort, the fact that they made it to state gave us the opportunity to showcase our school as a whole. And we were recognized as the state champs in sportsmanship, which isn't always easy. We had a little challenge that six-minute stretch, because people weren't happy with the refs, because when we shoot bad, we like to blame somebody else, but we got the shots. And we settled back in. Our parents, our band, we took a band all three days, nobody else did. We took pet buses down, we had staff members go, we had staff members cover one another. I know Mr. Casson's always here, and he wrote down a group computer story. We have some, his words, not mine, old fans who come to our games, and he comes walking in, one of our favorite fans, and he says to me, "Ms. Morrissey, is there any chance that you're taking a vehicle, you know, could somebody drive a van down for us? Old people, they can't drive." That's what he told us. And Mr. Casson was gracious enough, we took him down, they watched us play, and were just as tickled as they could be. I think you had six fans that first day that went down, and the second day as well, they had conflict. So, it was just fun. But our band, our kids, our team, because you don't win that award without the team, teachers, administrators, just everybody it takes to win that award. It's tough to do. And our kids were class act, every single group. No other 6A team was even given accommodation of any type. We were the only team that they awarded us the trophy and the medals, which the cheerleaders get that honor. But I am so proud of our school, both the athletic aspect, which I love, but also the sportsmanship aspect, so thank you so very much. Guys, I know that a couple of times this year we were like this, but you may be proud of this one.
What our coaches like to make a couple of comments before we prepare to transition with giving the certificate.
This group that we have in front of us here, all three of our seniors are here tonight, in Marvell, and Larry, and Darren, but we're also young, with Kai, and Devonte, and King, and we have four starters returning for next year, but you're right, we face them adverse situations. These guys are pretty resilient, and on game night, they're very competitive. They don't like to lose, and that's probably one of their best qualities. By far, one of the best seasons we've had at Topeka High since I've been here, since DJ was here, Ms. Johnson, and Dan Marcus, and those guys. And really proud of them, right? They did their school, right? They did their school proud. They did our coaches proud. They just came together at the right time. We didn't lose a game in the month of February, which was huge, because not only did we get third in the 6A state tournament, but we also won the Centennial League title outright, and that was maybe one of the most funnest roller coaster rides that I've ever been a part of, and it just goes to show the resiliency of these kids. So, we're young, so we plan on going back. We plan on winning league again next year, and we plan on being here again next year, too. Thank you.
Who's the senior in this? Yes, it's very young. I guess I can do it by height. This is just here, presented, the student high school's basketball team. We're proud of you and all of you, and we know a great coach is what leads a great team, so we thank our coach principal and our coaches. Well, members, do you have any questions for any of these young men? I suspect they might. So, I know you're this way, we'll end up taking a photo. You might want to come over here, so if they have a question, you can answer that.
Have any questions? Are any of your families with you tonight? Dr. Mickelson?
So, just curious for the seniors, what are your plans for next year?
I'll be attending K-State next year and majoring in business.
I will be joining the Army May 29.
I will go to Coffee Hill for a field ride on the basketball.
Anybody else? You basketball addicts down?
Okay, congratulations, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
And hang around for a few minutes, because we'll be calling people back up when we tell them. The next item, we have two proclamations, and then we are coming back to our Magno Board, and it's regarding our Equity Institute. Perfectly so, when we talk about equity, our Highland Park High School students and administrator is also here to talk a little bit about devices within the classroom. That's later in the presentation, but we know these young people have homework, so we want to free them up, so we're going to add them under that equity piece as well, because it's really an equity issue that we're talking about. But prior to doing that, we also want to do the proclamations, and then we'll come back to our Equity Institute. The National School Board Library Month, Ms. Diane Leopold, I believe she is, is she at, there she is, way in the back. Ms. Leopold, can you come on up? This month is National School Library Month, so we have a proclamation. Can you read a bit of the beginning and the end of that proclamation?
Oh, you laugh. Can I read? Oh.
You want to do a sentence or two, and then anything that you want to say about libraries and the awesome team that you have with you.
Well, I wrote this, but it was a long time ago. Whereas, learning to use information and technology to solve problems and make decisions are necessary 21st century skills, and whereas students need a wide range of books, electronic information, and technology to expand their knowledge and critical thinking skills, and it goes on and on and on. And it's, and then, and be it further resolved that, oh, no. And the District School Library Media is, it's District School Library Media Month, and everyone is urged to actively support our school library media centers as they engage students in the highest quality learning, prepare students for responsible, productive citizenship, and inspire excellence for a lifetime. They need to all come up here. And pretend that it's that first meeting that we have beginning of the school year, and tell everyone your name and your school. We'll start with you, Tanaya.
My name is Tanaya Tillman, and I am currently the media cataloger for our district.
I'm Melissa Williamson. I'm at McCaffrey Elementary.
I'm Chala Vidu. I'm at Landon Vidu School.
Kyla Schulshanki at Trish Mills Park.
I'm Stacey Denham. I'm at Stoudt Elementary.
I'm Kelly Kelly. I'm at French Mill School.
I'm Jan Stover, and I'm at Highland Park Central.
My name is Amy Gillland, and I'm at Jardine Middle School.
I'm Tiffany Lott. I'm at Rossell Elementary.
I'm Susan Patrick, and I have a diploma in Topeka High School.
I'm Chris Roush, and I'm at Library and Elementary.
That's Greg Ashes at Highland Park High School.
So, I just wanted you to be able to put in a face with the Topeka Library Media Specialists and all the work that they do, because the whole field is transitioning from print, primarily print, to primarily digital, and so this is a big change for everybody in our district. Elementary people don't feel that quite as much, but definitely all the secondary teachers, just don't say the word chromebook. So, thank you very much for this honor tonight.
We also have a one-minute video as well that the communications team has created for Library Media Specialists. We thank you all for all that you do. So, that rolling slide, and we do take our break. We'll continue to roll so that you stay where you get a chance to see inside some of the libraries. So, that'll be rolling throughout the break, and as we continue with our next proclamation. Our next proclamation is Dr. Harrington will be coming up, talking about National Autism Awareness Month, and she has some individuals with her as well, and welcome, Dr. Harrington. She is our Director of Special Education and Special Services.
Good evening. I'm excited to be here tonight to recognize Autism Awareness Month. We have a very strong autism team within our district, and we serve about 180 kids that are labeled with autism, and then some of them are duly labeled. But we have, tonight I have Nancy Bloom Camp, who's our Early Childhood Coordinator, and Marlene Graver, our Autism Coordinator with me, and they work with all of our kids and all of our teams, and I just really appreciate everything our students do to work with our teachers, and we have wonderful paraprofessionals, administrators, and every staff member that's in a building supports our students and interacts with them every day. And I think that's just very important in the lives of these students, and some of them really need to focus on communication, and so all of those interactions are very valuable to them. So, the proclamation says, whereas Topeka Public School has demonstrated tremendous growth in the provision of services to students and families where autism is involved, and whereas Topeka Unified School District 501 collaborates with statewide experts in the area of autism, and whereas April 18th will be celebrated nationally as the National Autism Awareness Month. Nancy and Marlene can come forward if you'd like, and then if we have any questions.
Have any questions? Dr. Mickelson?
Just out of curiosity, of the 180 students, are most, are they equally distributed across all grades, or are there, is there a, in general, I guess?
As autism consultant, I do everything from preschool all the way to high school consultation as requested by the staff, and it is pretty much all the way through. We have a lot of young ones. As autism is getting diagnosed more readily, I think we have more at the younger age overall.
Any other questions? I will just add, we really appreciate your job, and know that sometimes it's a very, very difficult job. So, thank you very much.
As we transition to the next item on the agenda, our Equity Institute, our Magno Award, is Dr. New also in the audience at this time? So, I will proceed on with sharing the Magno Award. It's the highest award that a school board can receive. It's given to us from the National School Board Association. If you receive the National School Board's magazine, this month's magazine features Topeka Public School for our Equity Institute. We are so proud that we have two board members, Dr. McCarthy, as well as Ms. Johnson, both on the Equity Council. In addition to our Equity Council, we've been acknowledged for our increased graduation rates over the recent last two years, our increase in enrollment in our ACT, and the many steps that have been taken over the last decade with implementing equity in a seamless way throughout the district, which includes health, wellness, gender. Additionally, looking at how we minimize and close not only the achievement gap, but how we minimize a lack of access to opportunities, such as the media specialist mentioned with the word chromebooks not to say in this setting. With that, we also now are piloting some projects in various schools. So, our awesome principal, Principal Perry, will come forward, share a little bit, this is her first year, and man, she was just kind of thrown in there at a time in which a variety of things are going on in the district. So, she's going to introduce her students. She's also going to talk about some new initiatives that they're piloting. I do want to also mention, as we think about our athletic programs and awards and our young ladies with our basketball at Highland Park High as well, next month, bowling, basketball, and a variety of other athletic programs will also be acknowledged. As we've been doing a lot of our academic programs, we know that without a good academic, athletic, and fine arts program, we don't have the balance that we need. So, we look forward to seeing you again next month, but come on up.
Good evening, board members, and good evening to all of those who are here tonight, and congratulations to all those who have been recognized. I am Shayna Perry, and I am the proud principal at the park, and we have fun over there, but we are also serious about the business of teaching and learning. Thank you. One of the things that Dr. Anderson just mentioned was about opportunity and closing that opportunity gap, and so we have trauma, we have all kinds of things that really are barriers that get in the way of our students, and so we want to remove those obstacles. And one of the things is that although that we are moving into more of a digital age, and all of our students, everybody, even adults, if you have your cellphone in your hand, go ahead and just raise it up. Some of y'all are only writing that while I'm talking. Go ahead and just raise your cellphone up. Yeah, you have your technological devices in your hands and not making eye contact with me, but that's all right. And so, one of the things that we have noticed educationally is that technology can get in the way, and it can impede, it can stop the learning process, and we want to get that thing out of the way. And in order for us to continue to increase graduation rates, we have got to make sure that our students have access to the content, and not just be sitting in the class as observers, but to be engaged at the same time. And we know nationally that our freshman passage rate and attendance rate has a lot to do with our graduation rate when it comes to the end. Most failed classes happen in the freshman year in high school and in college, and so that really, really is essential information. And so, we have piloted, because some of those technological devices kind of get in the way. And I call them pouches, but Yonder is a company that I've partnered with at Highland Park, and we are piloting these, they call them cases. Yonder started in Los Angeles, California, and it really started because of great artists like Alicia Keys and Lorde, and Dave Chappelle, who's a great entertainer, because they wanted people, well, the 20-year-olds, you know, when they say old people, I realize they're talking about me now. And so, when I used to go to concerts and things like that, I used to enjoy the concert. I was in the moment. I was live, not trying to Facebook live it. I wasn't trying to take pictures and send it to my friends and missing part of the concert that we paid to be there for to have that experience. And the same is happening with our students. They're there, but they may not be connected to the content in the curriculum that's happening in the classroom. And so, they started using these at concerts, and so adults, when they come in to their concerts, have to check their phones in. They hand these to them, and they put their own phones in the cases, and then they keep them locked up with themselves during the concert, and then actually get to experience the live concert. Adults who pay money to go somewhere have to stop and put their phones in and keep them. And then they're an outlier. If they take their phones out, young people, they get escorted out, because you're an outlier. You shouldn't be doing that. And so, we are having these right now. I was given 250 of these by Yonder, because they called and wanted me to buy them, and I said, "Well, really, if you want them done with fidelity, you might as well give them to me so I can tell your story," and they did. So, 250 of them were given to me, and we are piloting them in 12 classrooms. We looked first at our tested content areas for our sophomores and our juniors who are testing this year, and we put them in the, the kids walk into the classroom, and I'm really going to let the kids talk about how that works. Teachers don't have to touch them. That'd become a behavioral issue, and students are starting to learn the fringe benefit, or the extra piece that comes whenever we get the barrier out of the way of their learning. And so, I'm going to have my ladies come up. Keep on coming up. There's some fringe benefits that come with this. We'll let them introduce themselves. One fringe benefit is that I went into one of the math teachers' classrooms, and I said, "Give me some, give me a student or two that can go with me to the board meeting so they can tell what's happening with these Yonder pouches." And a fringe benefit that happened is that they get to go to dinner with me. So, we went to the Blind Tiger tonight, and we had dinner together. Nice benefit. And then, I said, "Just talk to the people about really what has happened." So, I'll let them introduce themselves and what grade they're in, and then talk about the benefits of Yonder.
My name is Brianna Brown. I'm in 11th grade. The pouches is that when you're in class, that's like hard or, you know, boring, that you're not like sitting on your phone, and you're actually paying attention to what the teacher's saying instead of texting somebody something, and you get more out of the class, and your grade goes up.
My name is Mariana Mesa. I'm a junior, and a benefit for me personally, I use my phone on a daily basis, and even in school, and it was a big distraction before this came in. I use it in my honors algebra II class, and it actually benefited me a lot, because now I'm actually, you know, listening, learning better, and I'm getting things like done more than I used to with my phone.
Since you're there, and you're on Topeka Public Library, can we answer some questions? Did we get questions about the cell phones or the smartphone, and if you want to put your phone in as well?
Okay, Dr. McCarthy.
Hi there. Any of you can answer this. Now that you've experienced the improvements by putting your phone away, do you think that this is something that's going to benefit you as you move on to college or to a job, in kind of learning how to manage your phone better?
in kind of learning how to manage your phone better?
I'm Jada Johnson, I'm a junior. I think you're correct when you say that. I think as we further approach this technological singularity, it's important to differentiate necessary and unnecessary. I think that it's necessary to have a phone on you, or just anything that can help you get in touch with people because just, I feel like having the Yonder things helps because it helps you kind of put aside time to use your phone, and I guess be more productive during the times that you don't need it. And when you don't have your phone, in that window that you do have your phone, you have to kind of like plan what you're about to do, how long you're going to do it, and what is most essential to do before you put it away. And I think that's important.
Any more questions? We are planning to pilot this for all freshmen next year. That is where all of the, and we'll have an additional, you know, pouches and put in them in all of those classes. And it really becomes where it's not a power struggle, we're not taking possession of someone's, you know, personal property, and they still have it with them, so they turn it off and put it on their desk with them. And then we're following board policy off and away unless the teacher says otherwise. It's by hour, so we don't have a big check-in place like roller skates or bowling, you know, we're not doing it that way. So it's really been extremely beneficial.
Dr. Mickelson has a question.
Was there resistance when you implemented this?
I really think it has to do with being very purposeful in how we piloted them. So, and when I spoke with the rep originally, he stated that most principals, because of the headache of the digital devices in the classrooms, that most of them wanted to say, "I want one for every kid," and it was very much so policing. And so then they ran into a lot of problems with cutting them open. Of course, you can get into it if you really, really wanted to, but because they do it by the hour, and we were very methodical, Mr. Ackerman and my team really sat down and discussed how this would be implemented best, so that we could really see that the classroom is your sanctuary, and this is some sacred time that you have an opportunity to learn. And so have you spent time wasting time during your instructional time? And so because of us seeing the benefits of it, it really has not been a negative experience. And the last thing is that, another fringe benefit I told the ladies is that the rep told me that we are the first school in the Midwest to implement these, and due to that, whenever people like Alicia Keys or Lorde were able to come to Kansas City, our students would be able to work the booth at $20 an hour, and then be able to also experience a free concert, but to see the adults put their phones away too. Thanks.
Thank you.
With that, we, I don't know, the one up, Ms. Johnson, she's not required on Superintendent's advisory.
She's talking a lot.
Lots of ideas to share. But with that, we also want to acknowledge, the Equity Institute is an award that will be hanging out in the main for you area. However, Highland Park has also been the leader in looking at issues, challenges for students. You were hired after that series already started and jumped right on in and are answering the questions all the time and coming up with creative ideas like this. So with that, we want to present their certificate to you all for the district Equity Council, which you're on, the Student Equity Council, and Superintendent's Advisory, which you're on. And we thank you for the continued courageous work that all of you ladies and the school has done. Those are all of our awards. All right, with that, and with those awards being done...
All right, we are ready to progress to business by consent. I'll take a motion.
Mr. President, I move the board to approve the items of business by consent as presented, and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Is there a second? Hey, we are ready for Superintendent's report.
We have several things that we would like to share with you. We'll start off with our digital citizenship and coding, including cellphone policy reinforcement. We've already touched base on the cellphone policy under the Equity Institute and Magna Award. At this time, Ms. Ramirez will, and Mr. Travis True will both come forward. Ms. Ramirez will give a little introduction as to what's occurring in schools now. You may have seen the STEAM news coverage most recently, and with that segue, I'll turn it over to both of our technology and curriculum professionals, and they'll introduce a little bit about what we're doing. We also have our first coding camp that will be this summer, and we look forward to seeing coding instituted elementary through high school.
Hi, I'm here, I'm going to present what we're doing with digital citizenship, and we've actually created a new website that went live last week that has, is updated with everything we're doing. And to get to this, if you're logged into Chrome, if you just come up here to the TPS 501 bookmarks and go to the TPS Technology Training side, it will take you right here. And digital citizenship is the first resource. For about five years, we've used Common Sense Media as our digital citizenship curriculum, and in talking to some of the elementary teachers in the past year, they ask us to look for some more material that was maybe a little more engaging to our younger students. And so we actually added the Google's Be Internet Aware curriculum, and it has a lot of training for the teachers, and it has more of a game format for the students so they enjoy it more. And so that's worked out pretty well. On our website, we also have a copy of our digital citizenship standards here, if you would like to look at them, and then all the links for both of those. We've also added some family resources, so that parents can come in and find out what they can do to help train their children and talk to their children about cyberbullying and cybersecurity and being good digital parents. So there's a lot of good information for parents there. Over on the side, we've provided, and we are in the process of taking this even further, lesson plans. And so teachers, we know they're busy, and it's hard for them to create big lesson plans and get it in. Just to show you, for example, digital safety, when they click on that, it's going to take them right out here. It starts and follows like, it starts off with Hook to engage the students, goes right into guided instruction and independent practice, and then has a wrap-up. So everything that they need to do, they can pretty much just come out here and click, and then they can assign it through, you know, Google Classroom. So those are some of the things we're doing with digital citizenship. It's a high priority for us in the district. We are in the process of training, I think we're training paraprofessionals next month. We're offering summer sessions, and we'll be, I think, doing a lot more throughout next year. Any questions about the digital citizenship?
And board members, the link to this website was just sent to you in your email, so you can explore that as well, to see some of the things that we're using within the classroom. So I'm going to go to you to talk about coding.
Thank you for presenting on this. I had exchanged some emails with you with questions about it, and I was extremely impressed with this curriculum, and I encourage everybody to go on and check it out more closely, because it's addressing exactly the kinds of questions that I had as a parent about how is it that we are training students to handle technology responsibly? They're, it, the issues just seem to compound year by year, and as my students have moved on to college, similar issues follow them. So these are, these are truly lifetime skills that every child is going to need to know in order to be a successful employee, let alone a successful student. So I was extremely impressed with the curriculum, and I hope, those are excellent resources for parents too. But I'm always hesitant when we only offer things in kind of a written format, and that we need to make sure that we think creatively about ways to get those materials to parents and families in a way that they can hear and use. So I would put that challenge to our communications department too. I'm sure there's some inventive ways they can have of reaching families that can let them know that they're not alone in dealing with these issues. As I know, across other districts in our county have encountered challenges and people not knowing who to go to. So, thank you very much for presenting tonight.
Okay. The second thing we're going to talk about is the coding, the new coding curriculum that we have been working on throughout this whole year, and I'm going to have Travis talk about that, because I've got a little robot I'm going to show you.
Our coding information's on the same, on the same website, just the link underneath the digital citizenship. Because the way that society is going with everything seemingly digital and online, coding in the future is going, is going to be primary, jobs primarily, coding's going to be a skill that kids will need when they're looking for jobs. And so what we did was, we identified, we identified those coding skills starting at preschool with non-digital coding as a way to get kids in the mindset of thinking like a coder, in directions and that sort of thing. And what we did is, we are, this information is, everything is scaffolded, so it builds on top into the next grade, and what Gail is demoing now is one of our Dash robots, which is, which is coded with an iPad, and it can be coded with what's called block code, which are just small blocks that are put together with different instructions. And what kids can do is they can put those blocks together, and then they can dissect that or look at how the code is actually written. And once they get used to that, then they can actually write code how a computer programmer would write it. And the Dash robot actually works with several different coding languages, not just one proprietary language. Yeah, Gail's going to demo that robot right now.
His name's Deere. Hello. Hello.
And so students from preschool on up, they actually can code this particular robot to say the things that the robot is saying. She actually wanted to bring something for you all, for you all to do a little coding activity. I told her, "You ought to have the kind of time during the board meeting." Truly after the board meeting, you'd be more than happy to code a robot. But with that, so preschool on, all the way up, and you also mentioned some of our first year teachers and other staff are now using this with their classrooms, is that correct?
Yeah, we have several classrooms that have, that have the Dash robots, they have, they have Sphero robots, which are mechanical, just a sphere that roll around and change color, and we have the Osmo, which have, actually have manipulatives with them, piles with letters and numbers that the kids can manipulate, and blocks that have, where they can code a monster to eat apples.
In fact, we were just at Ross before we came here showing the teachers, the primary teachers there had to do that.
And so when, when the students get to high school, there's actually a CTE pathway that is, focuses on coding. So, you know, hopefully, as, as this program grows and the technology grows, and we get more teachers doing this in their classroom, we'll see more high school students join that pathway.
Mr. True, well, thank you both for the, for the presentation on tonight. What programming languages are you going to be teaching to our students?
Well, basically, everything is, is based on JavaScript. So there's Swift programming, we've got, which, a lot of the iPad, iPhone apps are based on Swift. These can run on Swift also. So we'll actually do copy script, a lot of them, all the way up with the pinnacle, of course, being Python.
So when you say JavaScript, you had me. I mean, because when you look at the market, that's what we're seeing a lot, a lack of programmers, but then also that's the demand that's out there. The other piece to that is, yeah, I'm done sleeping once in a while, but as you were talking about the summer, well, the primary grades, the primary grades, and you're not actually doing coding in that level, you're doing more...
We started with pre-k and kindergarten. And basically, all this coding is, is an instruction to a computer to do something. And so they have to start with sequencing and logical thinking. And so just understanding on a piece of paper with, oh, we're going to have to go up to and over to, and of course, they're, they can't read, so we're just using arrows where we can write a number or say it. So that's just starting. And then if something doesn't go wrong, understanding troubleshooting, how important that is, that nothing works perfectly right off the bat. And sometimes you set it up wrong, and they have to figure out what the right, the correct way would be.
Well, I love it because I know I, I started my career at Pika High with Miss Sagam and teaching basic coding. But over time, I noticed that, we know that the languages change and the platforms change and all that, but the opportunity to understand that logic, I really got that at college level. So I'm loving that we're starting so early because we know what our market looks like and doing that.
It's like, any foreign language, the sooner you start it, the easier it becomes.
So as far as the summer program, how are we engaging students, the students or the staff?
The staff.
Okay.
And there is also a coding camp for students as well. The coding camp, as we still explore that, now that we have this, we may very well use pieces of this, but right now, we're partnering with the Discovery Center. They also have coding and robotics, and so they'll be pushing in, in ways that are seamless for us as well. So in our strategic plan, as a reminder, a year ago, we put in place a college and career readiness focus from preschool all the way through grade 12. So that would mean the pathway that's, that's at the end of high school, we should be able to backwards plan and see that present at preschool. So that college and career, this is one of those examples. And we thank the team for the demonstration, and I hate that Ms. Kirk isn't here to see this particular piece. But any other questions for our curriculum team?
Any other question? Thank you for the work you guys do.
The next item that we have, Ms. Wallace will speak to regarding our current CEP
So I put in each of your spaces, kind of a clarifying email. This is a conversation we've had previously around US history and our concurrent enrollment. We currently have US history over the course of three semesters, three different courses. At the beginning of the year, as the field supervisors for CEP courses were out in schools, there was some conversation and some conflicting information being shared with teachers. And so Mr. Dick and I worked to get clarity on that. And so what you have in front of you is an email from Bruce McTavish, he's the dean of the Love of Arts and Sciences at Washburn University. And he is clarifying for us that for the purpose of CEP credit, our courses need to be aligned to what the Board of Regents and the universities have as their courses. They offer it in two courses. And History 111 is History of the United States Through the Civil War, and US History 112 is United States Since Civil War. So they are, if we want to continue with CEP credit for US history courses, we need to align our courses to their courses. So that's the conversation.
That's if we, if we use concurrent enrollment through Washburn.
Correct. Currently, US history, and I don't have the exact numbers, but it is the largest CEP credit... credit course that we offer. More kids get CEP credit through that course.
Dr. McCarthy.
So, we've had a discussion for numerous years about this, and kind of in a departure from maybe other districts around the state, this board always felt really strongly in the teaching of American history before the Civil War at the high school level. That is not part of the state high school standards, believe it or not. The Civil War is taught at the eighth grade level, okay? And the high school sequence starts post-Civil War. I don't know if all of our citizens know, in the state of Kansas, that this is all that's required of high school students in American history. But if current happenings tell us anything, it's the importance of understanding the very beginnings of our country and the creation of our Constitution, and that we need more than one day out of the year on Constitution Day to learn about that. So, all of that is, I'm sure I'm preaching to the choir, but background on this board, for many years, discussed, sticking with what we had in place, which was a three-semester sequence for U.S. history at the high school level, allowing for that complete teaching of pre-Civil War at the high school level, okay? At this point, you know, we pretty much have to declare, we have to surrender, because the ability to earn college credit at high school is so important. What this sequence now forces us to do, I'm at least glad that in our district, we will be teaching that early history at the high school level. Again, this is outside of what the state requires us to do. It's packing in a whole lot of information in two semesters. And what we heard from high school teachers when we discussed this before, was that in order to cover that much content, it sacrificed depth, and not a surprise. So, unfortunately, this restricts us from having maybe the breadth and the depth of discussion that we would like on these issues. And I know that you will be working with our high school social studies teachers to figure out how the pace and so forth will work with this. But I would say, I am at least glad that we're including the pre-Civil War piece, and I think that's appropriate. That would be my wish, is that we continue to select and teach the, not only what the state requires, but what we believe constitutes the kind of education our students need. And I would still hold with our prior position, but I also understand the need to compromise in order to save students money and give them the opportunity to earn college credit.
Dr. Mickelson.
I, in principle, agree, but I'm not convinced Washburn's our only option. So, I'd like us to explore other options where we can get concurrent credit, or we can still stick to our curriculum established.
We can explore that. I do believe we have a requirement to utilize the university within our county for concurrent credit.
It's in the state of Kansas. We actually have to get permission to go outside of that, unless it is an online program. We explored that initially, just in terms of cost of concurrent credit classes and being able to look beyond what currently is available. But each region has to use the agreed-on university within that region in Kansas. That is the structure that we have here. However, we certainly will explore what options, be they online or otherwise, that we could continue to look at and report that back to the board.
I haven't done much homework on it, but First Year Free is an online program where wealthy person kind of supported financially the establishment. I don't think it's online, I think it's strictly online, so I don't know if you've looked at it that or not.
Are you referring to the CLAP?
Yes.
Okay. So, I did do a little bit of research around that, and it's very similar to an AP exam, only for college courses, and there is a cost to taking those exams. I believe it's around $50 to $60, but they are, the pass rate is very low.
Anybody else want to put your two cents where? Yeah, I'm very disappointed that what I thought was a very, very good U.S. history curriculum, even though it was three semesters, and I was disappointed when we tried to switch and basically eliminate prior Civil War history. So, but I'm totally with Dr. McCarthy in saying, we need this for our kids.
How many students take concurrent enrollment for history? You know the numbers?
I don't know the numbers.
Any guesstimates?
No, I can, it is, it is the largest...
Largest class.
And it's not offered like a class, you can take it and get the credit, or you can be in that class and not be getting the credit as well.
So, a couple of things that we'll bring back to the board. We will, one, look at those numbers so that we know how many students we're talking about impacting. The second item, we'll look at whether options are available, be they online or otherwise. There's still options that are available while we still perhaps may go with this option. It doesn't mean that we can't offer other alternatives at the same time. And then, we'll send some information over the next week or two to the board to see if any of those are of interest. So, this is not an ending of a conversation, but one that means we have to adjust so that they get credit, but we certainly want to continue to explore the other options, so that we are doing our best at offering really what we believe is a more comprehensive approach.
I guess I would add to that, that I would appreciate relaying to the State Board our feelings about this current sequence, and that it doesn't really meet the needs of our students, and calling upon them to reevaluate the history standards.
Those are really all the items that we have. I do want to acknowledge and thank both Mrs. Wallace, as well as Mr. Kip, and the various leaders that have committed a great deal of time with the meetings to be as responsive as possible to the public, the two-hour meeting from the last comment, as well as the phone calls, the two or three phone calls that have occurred in the various email correspondence. And we will continue to be as responsive as possible with any of the items that come forward.
I think we're ready for Board Member comments. Mr. Wade. Dr. Mickelson. Ms. Johnson.
I just want to just bring a reminder before us that Mrs. Linda, well, has passed and had a chance to attend her funeral yesterday. And I, for me, it is a very profound moment, I guess, as I'm drinking coffee, saying, as we look at the landscape and look at what's going on in our country, we also are reminded that while she was an icon of civil rights, that we should have all of these possibilities, not only after the Civil War, we can, and how she took on monumental tasks as a child. She became the face of this, of a movement. And it was real important to me when one of the lawyers with Legal Defense Forces spoke, she said she was insane when she found out that Ms. Laura had died. But in Spain, it was news, they were saying she had passed, and reminding them of the history and her part in that history. So, very profound moment. I appreciate the opportunity to represent the board, but I don't know, it just, I can't even put into words how this has affected me and a lot of people, even as I sit there, the reminder that we have work, plenty of work being ahead of us. But I'm appreciating all the opportunities we're taking to really serve our students in a deeper way, Equity Council and all the other opportunities, as we talk about our history and keep that in our memory for us. A reminder, I keep seeing that sign in my social studies class when I was in ninth grade at Big High, it said, "Those who don't remember their history are due to repeat." And we see those repeats going on even now. So, I just wanted to give, acknowledge her and honor her in a way that she deserves.
So, Ms. Johnson, would you think appropriate for us to take a moment of silence to remember, remember her and, okay. So, let's do that.
A very emotional time for all of us, actually. Dr. McCarthy. Two quick comments. One is to thank administration for, and Dr. Anderson in particular, for putting together a very productive board retreat that we had last week. We got to hear for the first time in a long time from the majority of our principals, and it was very powerful to hear from them, what was directly from them, what was going on in their schools, and challenges they face, and goals that they share. And then, the second thing, I would just like to express my appreciation for my fellow board members. Winning yet another Magna Award, that is a national recognition for what our board does in bringing forth effective interventions for our district. It's very unusual for a board to win multiple times. And, you know, not to pile on the praise for us, but what it really points out is the power of a group of individuals working together and being able to collaborate. And our current level of ability to work together has been hard-earned, and it's a pleasure to work with all of you. And I would especially like to recognize Ms. Johnson for her leadership in beginning the conversation, again, of equity for the board that started many years ago. She brought forth ideas of how to create courageous conversations, and in a very persuasive but gentle way that she has in sharing her vision and bringing us on board, encouraging all of us to examine that and take part in it. And all these years later, now we're seeing the fruits of that. So, thank you for that.
I have one comment. Reverend Williams is also on the Equity Board Council, and he's a new member this year. The other thing I just want to bring up is, I set in on the broadband initiative that's going on in the, it's about ready to go to JADO, and they're looking at multiple ways of doing it. It's probably going to come down to a use of fiber plus satellite or fiber wave, to do it for the whole county. But it looks like it's going forward, that's the cheapest way to do it instead of fiber all the way through the county. But I was quick to point out to the Joint Commission, which is all of the parts of government in the city and county, that our kids, some of our kids don't have the amount of money that's necessary to get broadband. And so, I wanted to make that point, and so, I did that again, and hopefully, and I think I was heard, because I was seconded by Gina Millsap and also the Susan Duffy, the best lady. So, just wanted to bring you up to date. Other than that, I'm taking a motion to recess to executive session.
Mr. President, I move the board recess to executive session to discuss individual employee performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma. The open meeting to resume at 8:30, 8:30, with no action to be taken, other than adjournment.
Okay, we're ready to move.